So I'm gonna go by my naval observatory time here. Declare that it's seven o'clock. Would you join me in the pledge, please?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judy DeRoche is not able to be here tonight, and so I'm gonna ask Robert Baxter to come up.
I'm gonna suggest Doug.
You would rather not?
I'd rather Doug come on.
Okay, Doug, come on up then, please. For the record, Doug Stewart will be sitting in for Judy DeRoche. I'd now like to have everyone introduce themselves. How do we start with Priscilla?
Priscilla Cobath, I'm the recording secretary.
Joan Prowl, member.
Doug Stewart, alternate.
Annie Robbins, member.
Don Stewart, member.
Vice chair.
Vice chair.
George Rothingham, chairperson.
Victor Van Ibro, land use clerk and code enforcement officer.
Russell Bookholz, building inspector, code enforcement officer.
Okay, thank you all. And first out of our business tonight is that we have an application for a variance. The applicant is James Rhines from White Mountain Survey for a property owned by Renee Wolf at 249 Old Bulkhead Road. There's more detail in the agenda if anyone wishes to look for that. So I'd like to start with Russ and ask you, Russ, to tell us the various reasons why a variance is needed for this project.
Mr. Chairman, before we get started, I suggest maybe we confirm that the application is completely has been accepted.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Is the application complete?
Yes, the notice, the abudders have been notified, the public notice has ran, and the fees have been collected.
Okay, very good. Would anyone like to make a motion relative to whether the application is sufficient to proceed on?
I'll move if the application is acceptable and all the criteria has been met.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the application then is before us, and I will again ask Russ to list the reasons why a variance is needed.
On the proposed plan, the bulkhead, which is part of the main structure, is within the 50-foot setback of the shoreline, which is what the state requires. There's an expansion to the house on the left side, if you're looking at the plan, which is inside the 30-foot setback, and well within the 50.
Can you just wait a minute? I can't, I don't see, I need to find my plan that you're talking about. Sorry, Russ.
What's up?
I just wanted to see it while you're talking.
So in the bottom left-hand corner is the proposed site plan. And the expansion of the house is in the lower left-hand corner. It's expanding to over where the deck used to be.
So hold on, can you show it?
I can show you on here. Right here. This was all deck. This is the 30-foot setback. The house has a 50-foot setback, which unfortunately isn't shown on this plan. Oh, is that it? Okay, it's been added. And then the bulkhead, it's only a corner of it, but that should be outside of the 50-foot setback as well, and it's set inside the 30, actually. So they're seeking relief to bring this bulkhead within the 50-foot setback and to expand the structure on the left side here on the 50-foot setback.
And the deck as well?
The deck is going away. The shade here is...
The upper deck?
The upper deck.
Is that being expanded?
Yes, that's also being expanded, and it's in, it's outside of the 30-foot, which a deck can be 38 feet.
If it's attached to the house, it can extend 12 feet into the 50.
Into the 50, to a 38-foot maximum. So it's about five feet too far.
Connected to a primary structure.
Right. It's five feet too far into, so they need relief for that as well.
Are we clear then on what the violations are that we need to consider?
So if they were to build a structure that was the exact same footprint as would exist today, they wouldn't need a variance, correct?
Correct.
Except for the bulkhead and the deck?
No, if it was the exact same footprint as what's there sitting there, then they wouldn't need a variance.
According to our non-conforming structure and uses regulation.
Right. And if, you know, if this left extension wasn't on the building, the bulkhead was relocated to within the outside for the 50-foot, and the deck was pulled back five feet, they also would not need a variance.
Okay. Now, are we clear on what it is that we are being asked to grant a variance for? If we are, I would suggest that we treat the whole thing as one application where what we are considering and arguing is whether or not to grant a variance for the violations that you've pointed out.
Just for the setbacks.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. So do you mean that you're not taking each individual expansion separately?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there any correspondence relative to this application?
We have had them.
No letters have been received?
No letters, no phone calls, no even...
No correspondence at all? Okay. Now, who will be presenting for the applicant?
I, James Rhines from White Mountain Survey and Engineering, and I will be presenting. Also with me is Jesse Thompson from Kaplan Thompson Architects, who is designing the home.
Okay. Well, you're welcome to come forward. Russ, would you make it remember?
I mean, I can do it from here, because as long as people are comfortable with me pointing with a laser pointer.
Okay, that's all right.
So as Russ has said, what we're seeking, this on this blow-up here, this is the existing condition, this is the proposed condition, and then this is a blow-up which shows in gray the existing footprint, and then the dark lines are the proposed. Jesse just told me that they have found a way to eliminate this bulkhead, so we actually could, can remove that from the request, that it could be back behind the 30. I know that Russ is saying, in your zoning ordinance, it talks about 30 feet with an asterisk that says the state is 50 feet, and that supersedes the towns. I don't know if the town has voted to eliminate their 30-foot, but like Alton has a 30-foot, Osiphe has a 40-foot, and typically what that means is if you came for a structure that was inside your setback, that, you know, then it could comply with your zoning, but still not comply with the state's, and the state may or may not issue you a variance.
We've adopted, excuse me, but we have adopted 483B.
No, I understand, but I just think your zoning table is still...
My policy is that the state, our state, we cannot be less restricted than the state. We're bound by the 50. The planning board and the voters don't want to remove the 30 because it pertains to accessory structures, but we're bound by the 50 feet.
Okay. So anyway, so that can be pulled back, so we can eliminate that from the request. This is, this is an overhang. This is cantilevered out over the foundation, so though it provides a rain line, if you look at the, one of the sections that we submitted, you'll see that it, on the, on the west elevation of the footprint that was submitted with the application, we'll be the next, next page in. Probably behind all of that text.
Where's this? On the backside of it?
Oh, is it?
No, it would be another drawing that would be behind all of that text. It's got a large scale, if you want to, you put that on the wall.
I've looked at it online, but I would like to know, I would like to have it here.
You can have mine. So if you look at the west, the west elevation, right there, you can see it's overhanging the foundation, so it doesn't touch the ground in that.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, here, do you want to take yours down, Mr. Rhines? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I can respond to that, too, if the board would like.
So the, the existing deck is, as I said on the site, it's 10.2 feet away, and the proposed, so the overhang would be 16.6 feet. The existing overhang is 16.9 feet for the primary structure. And so we are seeking the relief, as was outlined by Russ, for this, but we can eliminate this part here before the 30 feet. It's still within the 50-foot. There was a, there was a question on site about why the home couldn't be moved back, and as we saw, there's a pretty substantial slope coming down, and the further you push it back into the slope, then the first floor elevation has to come up higher, which is gonna make it look much more pronounced from the lake. So the idea was to try and preserve the view that most people are used to seeing, keeping it in the same location, improving living space, and Jesse can certainly speak to the, you know, to the internal program. But that was the thinking. Also, the septic tank, we've got to excavate to get the septic tank in. Even if we dig the natural grade away, you're still going to be deeper into the water table, so you're sinking the tank even further into the ground, which, you know, we try to make them not have infiltration into them, so that you're pumping groundwater in addition to sewage up, but inevitably the tanks, at some point in time, they will start to infiltrate the groundwater. So that's another reason for keeping it more or less in the exact same location. So unless the board has any questions, I can go through the five criteria, why we feel that we've satisfied the criteria. I will tell you, we have received our New Hampshire Shoreland permit, and we have received our sewage disposal system permit for the proposal.
I think we would like you to do the five criteria, but let's see if there are questions for us.
I have some questions. Where is the 50-foot reference line on that map?
So it's, I, I can draw it on it, because when Russ pointed out to me the difference, I simply just scaled it on. I can...
And why wasn't it added in the beginning?
Because the zoning ordinance has the 30-foot.
With a footnote of seven, so I...
Right, with the footnote, so...
Yeah. I mean, that's pretty explicit.
Well, it...
I'm a little disappointed that that wasn't on the plan.
Well, I apologize again. The, dealing with two other towns that have the same thing...
But I don't agree with your reasoning on that, because...
And that's, I understand. I'm simply saying, that's, that's why we didn't...
And do you have any other maps that you would be showing us at this time?
So this is the shoreline permit.
Now, that's a nice plan.
And this one, this one has the 50-foot setback shown on it.
And why did we not receive that?
The town received it, and I...
When did they receive it?
When we submitted to the state 30 days ago.
It's in the package. Not the full size, but the smaller one.
Where is it? Where's the state septic, the state plan?
We're obligated to submit that to the town when we submit to the state.
And where is it?
It's in the application packet.
The shoreline?
Yeah, that one, that plan. Oh, I didn't see that.
The rest of the board, everybody else got it right?
Yeah.
That was on the email that you sent out?
Yes. Second one that came in notifying all the members that the project is, the state passed the shoreline permit.
And you got a map with it?
I assume that this is what they were submitting to the state for.
You know, I don't think you got that map. I didn't see an attachment of that letter, but I happen to have some copies here. If anybody would like to have one up close.
Yeah, if you have one, I'll give them.
I have six copies. I don't know if you guys want to share.
George, you got one?
So, do you want one to fill, or you have one?
Yep.
So could you go through this map with us?
Sure.
I noticed that you have called out the vegeta, the trees.
Yes.
I noticed that you have the 50-foot buffer here.
Yes.
And you also have the natural woodlands defined as what was stated in your state approval.
Yeah.
I'm wondering why that wouldn't have been on the plan that you submitted to the town?
Well, because the variance isn't, hasn't had anything to do with the woodland buffer or the vegetation. It was a setback issue. So that's why we typically try to make them as legible as possible, so that we know, so that the board can understand what they're acting...
So, but we would like to see the trees. That's part of the submission plan for plan sketch requirements is vegetation and trees.
We showed the vegetation line.
Now, which one of these little circles shows all that greenery in the front of the property?
So these, these are the trees. In each 50, each 25-foot wide by 50-foot grid, we have to maintain 25 points worth of trees.
Right.
So we located enough trees to demonstrate compliance with the shoreline protection.
And you are remo, you did, you do have some trees that you are removing, and I'm...
We have, we, what we've shown them on to be removed, if they don't need to be removed, they won't have to be, but we needed to make sure we showed them in the event they have to come down.
I know. I wish we had seen that when we went out there. I wish they had been marked. It was rather vague when we asked which trees were coming down.
Well, you heard from Jesse that the owner's hope is to not have to take any down.
But we can't go on hopes at this meeting. If I'm overtalking, will you let me know?
I think I could agree with that, that you are.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
So, Russ, I think you were, you had a comment about the overhang and maybe how that weighed into it or not.
Well, it still creates impervious surface, and it's an increase in living space.
Sure, so it's no...
So it doesn't matter that it's an overhang or a foundation as far as setbacks go. So it doesn't really come into play because it's an overhang.
Okay.
It's an increase in living space, and it's an increase in impervious surface at the shore.
That's why we're here, but we also intentionally kept the foundation back, so we didn't have more disturbance.
But I, you know, I...
No, we understand that.
Yeah, that's why.
Okay.
I'm just here to point out the facts.
And the other advantage of that is that you're not disturbing the earth underneath that in close proximity to the, to the lake under that.
And just one more question, Mr. Rhines. Can you define, you have on the state map, you have indicated where the silt fence will be. Can you tell me how many feet that is from the structure?
I can. Just grab a scale. Off a difficult sight. So it's approximately 10 feet from the foundation.
So it's going to be down the slope, way down the slope.
Yeah.
So, okay.
As I said, what, what often will do if the site conditions don't permit silt fence, then you put in walls, which can follow the contour and don't require disturbance in the roots.
Anything else? Perhaps we should go on with your answers to the five criteria.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So as you know, we need to demonstrate compliance with five criteria. The first one is that the proposed use would not diminish the surrounding property values, because our argument is that by making the proposed improvements to the property, the structure as a whole will be setback further from the shoreline, making it more conforming to the zoning than the existing conditions. Additionally, by installing storm water mitigation and roof infiltration, and driveway runoff where there presently is none, and installing a new sewage disposal system, the surface and groundwater quality will be enhanced. While it is likely that a new home of higher value and improvements to the water quality will increase the surrounding property values, it certainly will not decrease the surrounding property values. Number two, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the handbook for zoning officials, and what the guidance they give in there says that for a variance to be contrary to the public interest, it must unduly and to a market degree violate the basic zoning objectives of the zoning ordinance. To determine this, you have to ask yourself, does the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood, or threaten the health, safety, and general welfare of the public? By this test, the requested variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The existing law has an existing non-conforming structure that is closer to the shoreline than the proposed structure. Additionally, current use is residential, and the proposed use is residential, which is consistent with the neighborhood and consistent with the zoning ordinance. Since the requested improvements will be more conforming than the existing improvements, the essential character of the neighborhood will not be altered, and because of this fact, the cited handbook and the case studies that granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because granting the variance will allow the landowner to redevelop the property while making the structure more conforming to zoning setbacks, and making the property more conforming with the Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act. As the handbook says, any loss to the individual which is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. So by this test, it is clear that the loss to the ant landowner, if they were not permitted to redevelop their property in a manner commensurate with their needs, while increasing the shoreline setback, enhancing water quality through stormwater mitigation, and installation of a state-approved sewage disposal system would be an injustice. For this reason, by granting the variance, substantial justice would be done. Number four, the use is not contrary to the spirit of the ordinance, and as the handbook says, in order to make that determination, you should ask yourself two questions. Number one, will granting the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? And two, examine whether granting the variance would threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. And as our opinion, based on these two tests the courts have used when making this determination, the essential character of the neighborhood will not be altered, as expressed before, nor will granting the variance threaten the public health, safety, or general welfare. In fact, the health, safety, and welfare of the public will be enhanced by increasing the shoreline setback, the implementation of stormwater infiltration systems that do not presently exist, and the installation of a new state-approved sewage disposal system, making the site more conforming with the New Hampshire water quality, Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act. Number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship, because, and as the handbook says, when the hardship is so imposed, is equally shared by all property owners, no other grounds for a variance shall exist. Only when some characteristic of the particular land in question makes it different from others can an unnecessary hardship be claimed. And hardship that this law has is that it was developed in a manner that is closer to the shoreline than other homes in the neighborhood, when looking on the Wakefield online database. This home was constructed closer to the shoreline than the seven subtherally abutting lots and the five northerly abutting lots in this neighborhood, and closer than most developed lots depicted on the Wakefield database. It is this fact that creates a hardship that is unique to this parcel, that is not equally shared by all property owners. And owing to this special circumstance of the property that distinguishes it from others in the area, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the purpose of the ordinance applicable to this application and the specific application of the provisions of the property, because, and the handbook suggests that you ask, is the restriction necessary in order to give the full effect of the purpose of the ordinance, or can relief be granted to this property without frustrating the purpose of the ordinance? Is the full application of the ordinance to this particular property necessary to promote a valid public purpose? Once the purposes of the ordinance have been established, the property owner needs to establish that because of the special circumstances of the property, the application of the ordinance provisions to his property would not advance the purpose of the ordinance in any fair and substantial way. So I looked at the zoning ordinance in Wakefield and found that the purpose was to lessen congestion in the streets, secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, promote the health and general welfare, provide adequate light and air, prevent overcrowding of the land, avoid undue concentration of population, facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, solid waste facilities, water, sewage, sewerage, schools, parks, children's child daycare, and assure the proper use of natural resources and other public requirements. This ordinance is also to help retain the natural beauty of Wakefield, encourage the most appropriate use of land, stabilize land values and buildings, and facilitate an economical provision of the future required utilities and facilities. This ordinance is also intended to promote the economic and social prosperity in Wakefield, as well as to provide for harmonious and aesthetically pleasing development, which is consistent with the character and rural setting of the town. So based on our reading of the zoning purpose and authority, it is our position that granting the requested relief will, will result in an increase in the shoreline setback, which is compared to the existing condition. It will implement stormwater management systems where none are presently in place, and which it will install a modern state-approved sewage disposal system. Therefore, all of that will not jeopardize the purpose of the ordinance, and that due to the special circumstances that I listed, adherence to the specific provisions of the zoning ordinance will not advance the purposes of the ordinance in any fair and substantial way. I state this because granting a requested relief will not result in an increase in congestion in the streets or create a greater risk of fires, panic, or other dangers. It will also promote the health and safety and general welfare by improvements in water quality from stormwater management, and installation of new sewage disposal system. It will also help retain the beauty of Wakefield by removing an older home in need of repair, replacement of new construction of similar size and scale. It will not destabilize the value of the land or the buildings. In fact, it will likely increase the surrounding values due to the proposed improvements in both aesthetics and employing stormwater infiltration techniques that are not present with the existing non-conforming structure, and by installing a new state-approved sewage disposal system, we will be enhancing the natural resource, which is the lake. Therefore, it is our position to satisfy this criterion required for granting the requested relief. We also believe as required by the enabling statute that the proposed use is a reasonable one, because it is residential, which is allowed in this zone. For those reasons, we feel to be satisfied with criteria. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, that's a pretty thorough, you seem to have dotted all the i's and crossed all of the t's, but is there anyone that would like to take exception or ask questions? would like to take exception or ask questions about any of that presentation?
I always go first. Does anybody else have anything to say?
I found it very convincing, if I may say so. I have read this before when you presented this in writing. I found your presentation to have touched all of the important points. It's not up to me as an individual, but I can say as an individual that I found it very convincing. Anyone else like to say something?
Okay, so, okay. All right, so I thought your application was good. I'm happy that you did submit the plan to the state, to the town, which I do not think you did. I have my... I think the project is acceptable. My concerns are for the vegetation being disturbed on that property within the shoreland setback of 250 feet and 50 feet. I take issue with the fact when you said that the 50-foot setback doesn't concern us because if you look at page 42 in the zoning ordinance, the performance standards within the shorefront district, they talk about all the best management practices and the construction activities and how they should be completed, and you did not reference those. I'm also concerned that we... I don't see the vegetation on the... at the front of that house on that plan. I don't see any of those little, you know, stickers, you know, those little dots that they put on the plan.
In terms of...
You know, the front of the porch where the...
Yes.
It's a deep, it's a steep slope.
Yes.
And I think that as a board, the purpose of this ordinance is to protect the lake. I mean, I find that the project is... And I'm not speaking for anyone else but myself. I have no issues with the variance.
Yep.
My issue is the vegetation, okay?
I understand, and I will tell you, I... This is the first time I've been... This... Our office has been before the Wakefield zoning board in years. And experience tells me that I know that I'm gonna... What I'm gonna show the next time before this board...
But you've been in business for over 40 years, Mr. Oins.
Absolutely.
And when we have a footnote number seven on table two that says that the state supersedes, the state 50-foot setback supersedes the 30-foot, then I think that the 50-foot matters. I also think that we're granting a variance for a non-conforming structure. If we did not, I believe that house would have to go back to the 50-foot reference line because in the ordinance it says that no expansion is allowed unless you meet the reference line, which is the 50-foot. But because you're doing a lot of give-backs, you're making a beautiful septic system, you're doing the stormwater management, I think that the expansion is minimal. It's three inches closer. I don't know why. Is that because of the... You know, that seems like an odd number.
They... Where the... It's from the overhang where it's three tenths of a foot from 16.9 to 16.6.
Okay, I'm sorry. I made a mistake. So it's measured from the overhang, not the actual wall.
We're not trying to...
Yeah. So I would vote to approve this, but I would like to have conditions that that vegetation in front of that property, that is the most valuable part of that property, not be disturbed. And when you say that there's a 10-foot distance from that foundation to the... What do you call that thing? The silk fence? Or whatever method you use for control of runoff, I'm concerned. The state is saying... What did the state say? That, you know, that it will be reseeded and... I'm sorry, but if the vegetation had been shown on that plan, and in fact, if you had shown the plan, that that property also is part of the... This is from our Wakefield mapping system. That property also has a New Hampshire Wildlife Action Plan. And the pink area denotes the highest-ranked habitat in New Hampshire. And that does not go all the way around the lake. That is specific to this property. So I don't know if you would be willing to, you know, work with us or if the board decides not... I'm not controlling it, but if we... If the board thinks and agrees with me, I wonder if you would consider not touching that vegetation because that's the only barrier that we have for phosphorus going down into that water.
Can I point out, Annie, that we can attach conditions to any approval that we may make?
Okay, so then we would vote on that? And board, I would just like to...
Perhaps you would postpone this and if we...
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, could I please just present this information that I got from the New... The Love of Lake Association? Just for your information, this is the last water test that they did in 2018. So the lake has three... The blue area shows that it is in high value, but the red area shows that it's high in phosphorus, and that's what creates the cyanobacteria. And there's a footnote here that says phosphorus is the nutrient responsible for microscopic plant growth, and it has been a trend of increasing over the years. So that's my story. I...
Well, I believe that a lot of the things that they're doing on this lot is going to help that cause as far as...
But that area is... Has been in existence. Once you disturb that vegetation on that steep slope, you're not going to be able to plant anything there that has that root system. But that's my opinion. I will ask... I will... Mr. Chairman, I'm finished.
If I could make one more point. So obviously too, if you've read the Shoreland Impact Permit, there's a list of conditions, and that's where I come in as far as making sure they're met. So there's things like orange fencing that will be put around that vegetation to keep the workers out of there to protect it.
But we can be more restrictive than the state. And when you tell me that you're going to put a machine in that area, I'm sorry, that is only going to disturb that area. Okay, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to talk so long.
Anyone else have anything? No, I don't. Okay, then. We have heard the explanations for the five criteria, but now we need to vote on each of them. So do we have a motion relative to criteria number one?
Um, let me look at it again. I think it's approved.
The proposed use would not diminish surrounding property values.
Motion to approve and agree with.
Would anyone like to second that? I'll second. Okay, those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That's unanimous. Number two, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Do we have a motion?
So move that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest.
Is there a second?
So for discussion? Second for discussion?
Okay.
It has to be... It has to be seconded first.
Okay, so I'll second. Ford, may I have a good discussion?
Okay.
Okay, so if I believe that the public interest is that water, where do we put the... Where would I ask about a condition for that?
After we vote on whether or not to grant the variance, we can also vote whether we should attach conditions and then vote on what those conditions are.
But what if you don't?
And I think that would be the appropriate time to take that up.
But what if the board doesn't agree with me?
Well, if the board doesn't agree with you, then you're out.
No, I know that. Forever, Mr. Chairman.
No, for this...
So then I don't know how I would...
For this matter, the board can vote whether to apply conditions, and if the board agrees with you that there should be conditions, then the board can vote on what those conditions are.
All right.
But that happens after we vote on the rest of the matters.
But I think it has a bearing on how I would vote on this article. So, all right, I'll just go with you. So I second it.
You second it. Okay, then those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Granting the variance would do substantial justice. Motion?
And I move that granting the variance would do substantial justice in this matter.
Please have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, John seconds. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That is unanimous. The use is not contrary to the spirit of the ordinance because...
And I'll make a motion that the use as proposed is not contrary to the spirit of the ordinance.
I'll second.
Okay, then move and second it. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's unanimous. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship.
And I'll move that literal enforcement of the provisions would result in an unnecessary hardship to the landlord.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Doug seconds. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is unanimous as well. That gets us to the point where we can have a motion if someone would like to make that that we grant the variance subject to conditions.
So move. I'll second that.
Okay, we've been seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is granted. And now we need to take up the matter of what the conditions are. If I understand you correctly, Annie, your concern is mainly with the vegetation close to the lake.
On that steep slope.
Okay.
And how... They could hand... They could put a... What is the device called? A...
Sheet dial?
Or a some... A erosion control method by hand and not put a machine in there until the house is raised.
Can I clarify maybe to give you some comfort?
Yeah.
I mean, a machine is going to be needed to dig a... To dig the foundation. But so the house will be raised... I don't think there's a foundation under the house, is there? So there's no foundation under the existing house, so that will come out easy. So there's not gonna be a big hole. So once that's gone, no earth will have been disturbed, just get the house out of the way. Then they can put the silk fence or the...
The barrier.
The water, you know, the wattle that needs to be there. But they do need some room, you know? You can't dig an absolute vertical wall for the foundation, so there'll be some excavation, but the machine will be sitting up here and excavating away from the lake. And the beauty of it is that it's digging in, so anything running behind it down to it is gonna go in the excavation. So but, you know, they don't want to disturb it. We simply, recognizing, you know, the realities of construction, 10 feet is pretty reasonable expectation that people will be maneuvering around there. We'll just, you know, we've clearly heard and we're gonna put the construction, the orange construction fence, as they say, in the state permit. And then, you know, Victor will be policing that, and obviously, this is a sensitive area. We don't want to have machines around, right? That's absolutely wrong, yeah.
Yes, Victor may speak.
When you say they need the 10 feet, could you... Is that 10 feet from the house, number words, friend made? Are we talking 10 feet from here out, 10 feet out here, and that's where they need to get out?
Well, that's the line we put so that, you know, if they're excavating, you know, there's gonna be some slope to that excavation. So I could say five feet, but I don't know if it'll, you know, if it sloughs in, you know, the earth does what the earth wants to do, you try to keep it.
Glad you...
Please speak. So when you excavate that 10 feet out, being a very large slope, when it's time to backfill, are you gonna bring that up to the original grade?
Well, I don't know that they're not gonna necessarily excavate... They're probably gonna try and excavate.
Well, if you go 10 feet out, you're gonna be four feet lower.
Right.
Right.
Okay, but if you go... You're gonna go six or seven by the time you get puddings in there, foundations. So you're still gonna be two or three feet lower.
Yes.
And you're gonna build that back up to the existing grade and replant it with native plants, like sweet ferns.
Yes, yeah, that's... That was one of the conditions in the Shoreland Permit.
Can you tell... Can you show me where that was?
Right, right. I didn't know what she was supposed to write.
Right, that's a good point, yeah.
And have you seen the Shoreland Permit?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just don't want to...
It only talks about replanting for the natural woodland buffer on number five. Oh, okay, so then number six, erosion and siltation control measures installed prior to the start of work. So that's not what you're going to be doing though.
Here's the maintenance... So this is... This is one of the requirements. This is what was approved for the shoreland. And one of the things it says here in the waterfront buffer, let's see here. So the following vegetation... Native vegetation shall be allowed to grow without cutting. Well, if you place... Put a condition that it shall be replaced with native vegetation. I thought that was in the standard note, but I'm not finding it, but...
Maybe grade two, put in grade.
Replace grade.
Replace back to existing grade.
Replace grade and replant with native vegetation would be a suitable condition.
Wait. Site just... Okay, so if we look at Article 15, which talks about the performance standards for that zone, it's page 42, and it's Article 15D. And it says that the natural hydrologic features and functions of the site are maintained to the maximum extent possible. Site disturbance shall be minimized and vegetation outside shall be maintained. I mean, why can't you put the thing five feet back? Because you're gonna disturb everything up in front of it. So 10 feet of that vegetation is going to be disturbed. And you... And where does it say that you have to replant it on this shoreline thing?
I... I'm not finding it.
Yeah, well, it says on number seven, erosion and silt... That's what it's called, siltation controls.
You can place the condition, I guess.
Oh, okay.
You have... With this variance, you have the right to place a condition that it be replanted with native vegetation and the grade brought back.
And it sounds like you would be fine with that?
Yes, that's the intention. Yep.
Makes sense? So we can add that condition if you would...
I would ask the board to consider that. And which... And you're going to be monitoring that?
Can I ask for a volunteer such as Doug, for example, to have a brief condition, wording of a brief condition to be attached to this variance?
All right, so I'm gonna get the bump here.
Yeah, okay, so...
A condition that any undis... That any disturbed soils on the property will be brought back up to the original grade? I don't know if that's... I don't know if that's, if that's going to make sense everywhere. Is that...
Well, in the front of the, in the front...
Back to its original grade?
Back to its original grade.
Is that okay with both of you?
Yeah, can.
Both of you?
Both our conditions maintain the current conditions.
Okay.
So all of our drawings do that already.
Okay. And, um, what?
Native shoreline.
Native shoreline plantings are...
Maintain and enhance.
Maintain and enhance, sure.
That sounds like pretty good language. Priscilla, did you get that down?
I did.
Do we want to specify where the areas...
You should get a monitoring in there too.
Yeah.
You know, you just don't plant and then it dies the next day. You got to keep on top so that it regrows. So you can also, the state requires that.
Okay, so how, how should we word that? And are we monitored by Shoreland for...
Code enforcement?
Shoreland code enforcement.
Usually they put a couple of growing seasons.
Okay.
That's usually what the state requires.
Yeah, I mean, it's different depending on what you're planting at the site. But that's generally after a full year, you know, we'll go back, take a look and see where it's at.
They can't remove the control.
Because you can't... Right, right, right. That's a condition.
Okay, I'm trying to add some language.
Write it down.
And in...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We'd like to, we'd like to reduce this to a...
Okay, you've got any disturbed soil on the property?
Less than ten pages.
What you have written down.
And if we have some language, we can add hold on that language.
But if it's not written down, then it's just going to, no one's going to know what the issue is. So words are okay, I think, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want me to read it back?
What have you got so far, Priscilla?
Okay, and any disturbed soil on the property will be brought back up to its original grade and that natural shoreline plantings maintained and enhanced, uh, something by shoreline enforcement. Oh, maintain, uh...
Monitor.
Monitor by shoreline enforcement for X number of seasons.
For two growing seasons.
Two growing seasons.
Mr. Chairman, may I...
Yes.
The way she just read it says, any disturbed ground will be brought back to its original grade. We're building the septic system up, so that's going to be higher. If you say forward of the, it sounds like I'm hearing the concern is forward of the house.
Say within the thirty foot setback.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Or within the thirty, yeah, that would, just so that we are trying to keep...
Yeah.
That's reasonable.
The thirty foot setback?
Within the thirty foot setback, yes.
Okay, I got that.
Okay.
And could we, Mr. Chairman, could I ask that a photograph be taken pre-construction of that area in front of the house?
We've got some photographs of both of them.
Yeah, we submitted some. You may have some in the town file, because we submit those with the Shoreland application as well.
And I also am looking at this elevation of the house, and I know that it's a computer rendering and that, I mean, I want, I would like this taken out. Can we take it out of the proposal? Because I don't want anyone to look at this and say, oh, this is what they approved. And they have a walkway to the water and...
That's totally appropriate to pull up. Because honestly, the reason we didn't put all those ugly computer trees is just so we could show the client the house. It wasn't the convention of the, if you're removing the vegetation, you couldn't see the house if you...
I understand, but this is something that's forever in the file and...
Yeah, I would love to pull that up.
Just, could I, should I make us...
But that A nine one?
Should be in the motion.
Should I make it another motion, or should we finish this condition, Mr. Chairman?
I think that we need to have condition number two.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Could I make a point of war? If it was submitted, it's for public record. I don't know that you can just destroy it. You may want to strike, write void or something. But I think just to remove it might, you know, somebody might say, hey, what are you taking out of this file?
Okay, so we'll...
Vegetation displayed is not accurate.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll think about that afterwards.
Don't approve vegetation shown on the rendering or something.
Okay.
I would just be leery of taking something that was a official document.
You could just state A nine one is for reference only, not actual importance.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, so I'm sorry, but I know I got you, I got everybody off track on that one. So has this motion...
Did you...
Nobody's made the motion. Was Doug good? You second.
Um, what you read, can we use that as a motion?
That is condition number two.
Right, should we...
We need a motion to insert condition number two.
Should we vote on the first one? Or do we vote on them together?
Did we not do that?
No.
I don't remember.
Okay, let's, let's settle number one. May we have a motion relative to condition number one?
So, do you mind reading that again?
Now I go.
Good job, Priscilla, thank you.
Because I don't have a word for it.
Any disturbed soil within the thirty foot setback on property will be brought back up to its original grade and that natural shoreline plantings maintained and enhanced, monitored by shoreline enforcement for two growing seasons.
So original grade within the thirty foot setback.
Right.
So I'll make a motion that that's a condition.
Okay, is that seconded?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Condition one is settled. Now, we need a motion to add a second condition, if you wish to.
Uh, I'll make a, can I make a, make the motion if it's my idea? Okay.
Yes, please do.
I would like to make a motion, a condition, I mean, offer a motion for condition number two that the A, um, what is this called?
Dash nine point one?
Yes, A dash nine point one, what are these called?
Plans?
Elevation.
Elevations. Um, do not represent...
Approved vegetation.
The, thank you. The approved vegetative state, vegetative...
Vegetative.
Plan, restoration condition or...
There you go.
Approved, help me guys.
Vegetative plan.
Vegetative plan.
No, what?
Tative, I hope someone can spell. Can, condition or plan?
Conditions.
Conditions. I'm going to put conditions because it wasn't really a plan. So I would like to make a motion that as a condition, A dash nine dot one elevations do not represent the approved vegetative conditions.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is granted.
Get out.
I'm almost afraid to ask, are there any other conditions?
Mr. Chairman, these, this is our job. This is our job, to protect that lake and to help the client satisfy their need. Let me see if I have it coming on.
Apparently, none, and, um, I believe that we have touched all of the bases and this variation has been granted with conditions. And we can notify you that a letter will be sent out within...
Five days.
Within five days. And I also should tell you that any interested person could appeal this within thirty days. And so this hearing is closed.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would like it to be known that there is a fifty foot setback in Lake...
Oh, I need to kill level to get that again.
Eight o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the dock. Thank you guys for listening to me, finding me.
Yeah.
We still have minutes.
We have minutes to prove. We're still in meeting, guys.
So, Mia.
Thank you.
We need to take up the, uh, the minutes of the hearing of May twentieth. Have you all had an opportunity to read those? And, um...
I didn't read them because I'm going to abstain because I would refuse myself, but I'm sure they did.
There is, uh... There's one point that I noted, but I may have noted it incorrectly, but we can get this affirmed. I noticed on the minutes that it mentioned Robert Baxter being present at the site walk, but it shows him as not being present at the hearing. I may be mistaken. I thought that I saw him at the hearing. He's sitting right here, so can you tell us whether you were at the last meeting?
I was at last meeting. I was not at the site walk.
Good, so I got them mixed up?
The two are crossed.
Okay.
He was not at the site walk or was at the meeting.
Okay.
Is there anything else? So if not, can we hear a motion to approve of the minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting with the, one change is just discussed.
Is that a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Doug. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain, Mr. Chairman. I refuse myself at that meeting. I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay, then, is there any other business?
Well, I'd like to suggest one item. Annie had the opportunity to attend a meeting in early June hosted by the state over in Condrick, and I wonder if you could just talk briefly about that.
Okay, so, um, those are just so valuable. You learn something new every time you go. There were about three hundred people there. I did bring back a handout of the legislative updates that I gave to Victor, and perhaps we could copy those and...
Distribute?
Distribute those to the online, yeah, maybe, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Can you please do that?
Um, if you read those, you'll note that some of these legislative updates are actual in law and some are, you know, in the process of becoming, of being voted on. One of the interesting things that came up was when home, when builders are in the housing industry have, um, a, what do you call, get denied and they want to make an appeal, there will now be a, two choices. You may either, they may take it, and this is only for housing folks, to the land, to the Superior Court, or there's a three-person board that they can take it to. If they choose the option of taking it to this three-person quasi judicial board, it will go, and they deny the builder, it will go to Supreme Court. If they go to the Superior Court, it has a possibility of being remanded back for, to the town for, you know, another look. But, so that was, I thought, the most interesting change in legislation. I think that one of the elements that they were stressing were when we are voting on our criteria, that we do it the same way all the time. So if we combine the criteria, we'll make, it will always be combined. If we vote on them separately, then we should always follow the same practice. And that there's a, something called findings of fact, so that when you're denying or approving, there should be a sheet or some kind of written statement on the reasons why. And it, just in writing, and even though we've all heard it and it's taped, should it ever go to court, those findings of fact are what the, what the judges are going to look at. Um, like, it was, I wish I could have gone to a, to another one of...
Be in the minutes, so...
But it, but it has to be in the form of a fact of, um, you know, we denied this because, or we're approving this because it's substantial justice, because we believe that no party, the town is in armed or the house is in the right place or, but it should just be a little comment. And the only other thing they said that stuck out to me was that when we are discussing applications, every member should contribute. You know, don't let a big loudmouth like me run, you know, talk all the time. Someone, other people should be heard, and it's, it's almost incumbent upon each member to either say, you know, I really, you know, have a comment of, you know, how you're feeling. Because you could help, you could influence or, you know, that's what are, you know, you could change somebody's mind. But as far, I mean, I won't discuss this application tonight, but, because there's, you know, it's in the appeal process.
No, we should not discuss it tonight's hearing.
Right, but, um, I think that we should have a meeting on the, on the process of, you know, the application process and, you know, how things are distributed to the members at some point when we all have free time, I guess, if everybody approves. But sometimes I feel like it's a little disjointed. All right, I'm done.
Okay. Anything else? Any other business?
Any other applications that you're aware of?
As of today, we don't have any.
Well, I can't come in July. You can all rest studies. My grandchildren are coming.
So I do...
What is the application deadline?
The deadline would be the first of all.
Sure, do I have a general ZBA question? I'm not sure if someone...
Sure, go ahead.
Um, if somebody gets a variance and is granted for a setback issue, so say they have a building and they want to encroach a couple feet into the setback for that property, is there a deadline as to when they would have to start building if they got that variance?
I think it's good for two years.
Is that right?
Once you issue a variance, I believe, two years.
So after two years and a day, that variance expires if it hasn't started. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Chairman.
We're not, we're not quite done. We need to set a meeting date and, uh, I suppose a meeting date would appropriately be our standard advertised, not advertised, but...
Third Monday of the month.
Third Monday is our normal procedure. We will have a meeting that night if a matter arises, if an application is received. And as I understand the new procedures, we do not need to advertise the meeting if there is no reason for it. If there's no application, we simply don't advertise it and then we, of course, will not meet.
The reason for that is we have, there was some complaints, I guess, with Town Hall that the meetings were being posted, but yet they were on the calendar and then we were canceling them. So they asked us. So the way it works for, the submittal date is three weeks prior, the Thursday prior to that. Thursday is the date that I need to get the public notice out. So the, I need three full weeks prior. I'm sorry, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but I can let you all know. But it's pretty much three weeks prior than the third week, so it brings you about the beginning of the month is usually the cutoff time for, for me to accept applications in order to notice them in time. So I can let you know, you know, three weeks prior. Or, what I do is I wait till the very last submittal date, and if there's nothing there, then we don't need to schedule anything. But if I get something up until that last date, then that's, or I notice, anytime we get an application, it goes right out to you people and I let you know we scheduled a meeting, okay?
Yes, we would appreciate it.
Right, but I mean, there'll be that one that might hit that last day of submittal, you know, and we have to take it, so...
Right.
And I guess we can say that tentatively, the next meeting will be the third Monday in July, if it is necessary to have such a meeting.
Good way to put it.
Now, another motion is in order.
Make a motion to pause the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.